Good evening. It is 6:30 PM on Wednesday, December 18th, 2024. This is Brian Leighton, Chair of the School Committee. I am calling the School Committee meeting to order. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being broadcast at a later date over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. This meeting will be broadcast at a later date through the Local Access Cable Channel and on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be found on the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by open meeting law. First up on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Executive Session to Conduct Strategy Sessions in Preparation for Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel or to Conduct Collective Bargaining Sessions or Contract Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel. I'll look for a motion.
I move to go into Executive Session for the previously mentioned reasons.
Second, we're going to do a roll call vote.
Mrs. Prozowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you. We're 6:45 PM. We are back from Executive Session. Our next item on the agenda is Public Comment. I will open it up to public comment from the public. Somebody just walked in? Public comment from the public. All right, seeing none, we're going to open it up to public comment from the committee.
I have a comment. So I'm sure it'll come up in a report or something later on, but I want to congratulate and thank Mr. Scollbrini, Dr. Burnham, Dr. Gilson for their great work on the Budget Task Force, which Mr. Scollbrini reported out last night at the Select Board Meeting in what turned out to be
An hour ahead.
fairly extensive conversation. My record for standing at that podium. So, and I think that all of the recommendations, well, I don't think I agree with all of them. I think that they're all things that should be pursued in part of the narrative to driving greater fiscal leadership and responsibility in Lunenburg. All of that being said, I think we also need to keep our eye on the ball, which is we have a number of things that need to move forward over the course of the coming years, including dealing with the turf field, dealing with Turkey Hill, dealing with town offices, all of which are going to need support of the voters. And now if we're adding CPA and a number of other things like that, that's an awful lot for us to have to articulate campaign and build consensus around. And then finally, in terms of the budget issue, the big issue around inflation and Prop 2.5 and the delta between the two. While there are a lot of things that were discussed last night that can have an impact, the game is still chapter 70. When you run a $25 million budget and 10 million of that comes from the state and it does not expand at the same rate as the rest of your budget, the town has to pick up the state's share. And we need to continue to demand leadership from our legislators and our other stakeholder organizations to make that case and right that wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the committee? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is the Chair's Report. So I have a couple of updates. I have an MSBA update. The Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, has announced the Statements of Interest, SOIs, for the 2025 Core and Accelerated Repairs Program. The ARP will be open Monday, January 13th, 2025 at 10:00 AM. Some key updates. The core program focused on new construction, additions, and major renovations. And the deadline is Friday, April 11th, 2025. It's an accelerated repair program, ARP, that now includes heat pump conversions alongside roof and window door repairs to align with Massachusetts net zero carbon emission goals. Starting in 2025, ARP SOIs will be accepted biannually with the next deadline Friday, March 21st, 2025. Important changes. There's a template update. Districts reusing prior SOIs must review changes that may impact responses. Submission requirements, supporting materials must be uploaded online. Hard copies are no longer accepted. And the MSBA encourages districts to submit SOIs for applicable projects. Additional guidance and details are found on the MSBA website. It's an opportunity for addressing school building needs and advancing sustainability goals. The Finance Committee Chair reached out, was looking to talk about how we execute budget season given the transition of Carter and whoever's selected as Town Manager. A lot of new players this year with new chairs, so looking to have a conversation about that. Also, they have a Finance Committee meeting tomorrow with a joint meeting with the Budget Task Force. The Scarsdale 211, they did have that meeting on Friday, 12/6, but it was a smaller group, so I await updates on that. Also in our folder, I shared an article on North Middlesex that they are closing two of their schools. North Middlesex is Ashby, Townsend, and Pepperell. They're closing the only school in Ashby, Ashby Elementary. And they're also closing Spalding Elementary School in Townsend. They're going to be combining some of the schools. So I think that's twofold. It's a warning when you see towns that are not passing overrides, some of the consequences that we are going to see. And also, I looked at it too, that they now have two vacant schools. And in a town where we're considering possibly renovating a school and looking for a space that maybe our students could go, maybe we could look into negotiating with North Middlesex on possibly using their building or using a building. I also have a Social Security update that affects a lot of our staff. So the Senate actually voted, the US Senate, voted today to basically take the next step to advance the measure on the Social Security Fairness Act. The House had already actually passed it in November. And it's a bill aiming to repeal two provisions that reduce Social Security benefits for public sector workers who also receive pensions. So it's the Windfall Elimination Provision, the WEP. It reduces Social Security benefits for individuals with pensions from jobs where Social Security taxes were not withheld. And then two is the Government Pension Offset, the GPO, reduces Social Security spousal or survival benefits for those with non-covered government pensions. So I've heard from several retirees about this, and the concern is that if a if you have a retired teacher on the pension and their spouse is collecting Social Security, if that spouse dies who is collecting Social Security, typically the spouse would get that Social Security benefit, but if they have a teacher pension, they are not going to get that Social Security benefit. So this would eliminate that conflict and they could actually collect the Social Security. Or if you have people coming into teaching late that put into Social Security, this would allow them to still collect Social Security and their pension that they're paying into too. These rules have long affected public workers, including educators, impacting over 2.7 Americans as of 2022. The proposed repeal has bipartisan support and will restore full benefits for those affected. If passed, it would significantly benefit public employees impacted by these provisions. And this legislation may have more important implications for educators and other public employees in Lunenburg and across the country. And the last thing, I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, Boxing Day, or anything else you celebrate. Next item on the agenda is the Student Representatives Report. We do not have a student representative tonight. The next item on the agenda is to review and approve minutes from November 20th, 2024. Were there any questions or comments about the minutes? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I will move to approve the minutes from regular session November 20th, 2024.
Second, any discussion? I'm going to do a roll call vote.
Mrs. Prozowski?
Oh, sorry. Can I just ask if we made the correction of the minutes?
We did. Yes.
And I vote yes?
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Mr. Scollbrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you. Next is to review and approve line item transfers, warrants, and donations. The warrants from December 3rd, 2024 to December 13th, 2024 total $217,821.91.
And for donations this evening, we have a check in the amount of $3,420 from the PTO. This was a result of the request for funds program that the PTO does. And this first check will be deposited in the gift account for Turkey Hill Elementary School. We also have a donation from Hannahford Helps Program in the amount of $365.04. This will be deposited into the Lunenburg Middle School Gift Fund. And we have a check in the amount of $410.04, also from Hannahford Helps. And this will be deposited into the gift account at the primary school and will be used to support future field trips. And I recommend acceptance of all.
Any questions or comments?
I make a motion to accept the all three gifts with gratitude.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, we do a roll call vote.
Mrs. Prozowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Mr. Scollbrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you. Line item transfer?
And we have Dr. Gilson with us this evening to go through that line item transfer.
Okay. We have a line item transfer request from the Technology Department, and they have requested to transfer $1,279.60 from the computer maintenance repair system. They purchased screens to replace for the student laptops. And they want to, that money is supposed to be taken out of the lost books and technology involving account. And so you can have the money process from RevTrak until now, so now they're processed. So they just want to move the item or the line of $1,279.60 over to lost books and technology involving.
In other words, when students' devices are not insured, they assume the liability of any repair. So parents make their payment through RevTrak. It goes into that lost book account. But as Dr. Gilson explained at the time, there weren't funds posted there. So we took it from a different line, and now we're just moving money to more appropriately reflect where it should be taken from.
What questions or comments do the committee members have? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the line item transfer as described. Second.
Any discussion? I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Prozowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Mr. Scollbrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes. All right, next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
An update on Director of Facilities. We have been reviewing applicants, and we will be conducting an interview of an applicant tomorrow. An update on the annual gift card drive. Great big thank you to all the generous members of our community who donated to the Lunenburg School Secretary's Annual Gift Card Drive. This year, we received $6,700 in donated gift cards. So thank you to all those who donated. And then also a great big thank you to all of our secretaries for their efforts to support our families each year through this effort. This year, we also had a donation of Christmas trees. We were contacted by folks at Hollis Hills, and they were looking to donate 50 Christmas trees to families in need this year. So again, we have an amazing community that rally around in support when folks are in need. So thank you very much to Hollis Hills. Recently, Mr. Santry received a letter from Niask as we continue this ongoing process with Niask. I did place a copy of that letter in the Items of Interest subfolder in your meeting packet tonight. If anybody has any questions relative to that, they can send them my way, and I'll connect with Mr. Santry, and we'll get back to folks with any answers or any questions you may have. I also did put in that they did let us know that if any changes occur with staffing levels, we are obligated to notify them within 60 days, I think. So I'm sure that we'll have many a conversation relative to budget development for next year. And also, I had on my list the MSBA. The only thing that I would add to the Chair's Report relative to the new cycle opening. On January 21st, they will be hosting a webinar for superintendents to go over the ins and outs of the upcoming cycle. So Dr. Gilson and I will attend that as well. Few calendar reminders again for everyone. The January meetings are off-cycle. They are not the first and third Wednesdays as they typically are because the first Wednesday of the month is the holiday, January 1st. So this upcoming month will be the 8th and the 22nd. 6:30, both meetings will be hybrid. The first meeting, January 8th, hybrid from Town Hall. January 22nd, hybrid here from the middle high school. And schools and school offices will be closed beginning Monday, the 23rd of December for the holiday break. And we will reopen on Thursday, January 2nd. Even central office staff, they're going to be a very, very skeleton crew at those offices. So anybody looking to come in to conduct any business really would be encouraged to call or email in advance to be sure that the people that they need to meet with are actually in the office. And with that, I'll just end with wishing everyone in the community a happy holiday season. Hopefully, a healthy holiday season. There's an awful lot of virus activity floating around the schools and the offices in recent days. So wishing everyone a healthy holiday, and that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. What questions or comments do the committee members have? All right, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is, we have presentation. I think it's just a place setting, no presentation tonight. Next item is New Business Action Item, School Food Service Administrative Review.
So I invite Nadine Lorenzen to review the recent review that was conducted and the corrective action plan that she's put together. And Nadine, I'm making you a co-host right now so that you can screen share your slides because the host of the meeting cannot screen share. It's a security thing.
Okay.
The food service program is subject to an administrative review on a three-year cycle. And luckily, this year, one of, was my schedule. So the review is basically to the evaluation of the overall program from how the food is brought into our schools, how we menu it, how we serve it, how it's stored, how it's purchased, how we track the production of it, temperatures, the size, everything. So they sent, Debbie sent out a reviewer, and it's worth noting that this year that she came, our reviewer came with a couple of guests. She was a mentor to two folks from New Hampshire. They were very into process. Both were new to the program. So yeah, we had our review in, when was it, November, just before Thanksgiving. And I received the corrective action plan. Sorry, because it was imminent. And it was the lengthy one this year. Again, I think it was because she was a mentor, and she wanted to find every little thing and share as much knowledge with those folks as she could. I'm certainly not going to go through every piece of that corrective action review you gave today. My major reason why I wanted to share this review process review is the fact that in that corrective action plan, it was found that some things need to be posted for the public. And before I posted it for the public, I really would like to share with the whole community. So a couple of those things are the fact that our policy, our wellness policy needed to be updated and our civil rights policy needed to be updated. And that a triennial assessment needs to be posted for the public. And that's basically it, as far as being posted for the public. And if you're wondering what a triennial assessment is, it is an assessment of our wellness policy which this assessment is conducted, again, on a three-year cycle. And we've conducted it as of 2023, 2024, and I did it with the Wellness Society Committee. And we were fully implementing most of our practices in areas including disability education, nutrition education, wellness promotion, and marketing, and USC's board and male action. We were, however, lacking in marketing, which was another piece that we needed to update in our wellness policy. So it kind of came here and came here. Oh, I'm so sorry. I never clicked the screen. There you go. There you go. Apology. I just talked right through all of that. I am so sorry. So these are some of the things that are reviewed. Actually, the administrative review. And then corrective action plan. Nutrition analysis, meal components. We did get nutrition software this year. And that did pose a bit of a problem. There was a bit of a learning curve for some of our managers. And we have since gone through some more training and worked out a better plan for how to use and read and comprehend that program. And then the training. My apologies for my lack of sharing my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Lorenzen. Yeah, we have the slides too. I think it was more for the public, I think, just flipping through the slides so the public could see the slides. So thank you. We appreciate that. What questions? What questions or comments do the committee members have?
I just have one question. What is Titan?
Titan is very good software.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Prozowski, did you have any questions, comments?
What do they, what do they mean by marketing?
In our cafeteria, they all make sure that everybody does that. We should be marketing that we can help and that we provide resources. We look for a situation to be marketing, please.
Okay. I was just curious about that. Thank you.
And when you say foods that you can sell, is it foods that need nutritional guidelines for the food program?
Absolutely. So we can sell health cards now, and some of those are ways of sharing, but as long as they're paid and we have the guidelines, there's that fourth and fifth.
What are the questions or comments do the committee members have? All right, thank you, Ms. Lorenzen. Thank you. All right, so this is an action item. Are we looking to?
Just accept the report.
Okay. Look for a motion?
I make a motion to accept the report regarding the School Food Services Administrative Review.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Prozowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Mr. Scollbrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is New Business Action Item, FY '24 End of Year Report.
So you have the report in your packet, and Dr. Gilson is here. She may be able to answer some of your questions. However, I would just remind everyone that we contracted the finance consultants that worked with us last year to do this report. So if there are questions that we can't answer, we will be able to get you the answer and get back to you.
What questions or comments do the committee members have?
I have to apologize. I have not had the opportunity to review this yet. We may reserve the opportunity to ask you questions offline when I do.
I would just say that there's lots of numbers, and as always, the lots of numbers seem to be logical to me. And if there's something in here that we should, our attention should be drawn to, I would appreciate knowing what that is. But I did go through the numbers, but not knowing anything about the numbers, I, you know, it seemed all reasonable to me. But if there's something that we need to know about it, that's all.
Is this available to the public?
Do you know that Mrs. Peterson got all of these things posted prior to the meeting tonight, but it will be?
Okay. All right, if there's no comments or questions, I'll look for a motion to accept the report.
I make a motion to accept the report.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, I think we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Prozowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Ashenbo?
Yes.
Mr. Scollbrini?
Yes.
And Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Action Item, Secretary's Memorandum of Understanding.
So we recently engaged with the Secretaries Association for their next contract. The contract would begin July 1st, 2025. And I don't know if either of the school committee members that were on the bargaining team would want to recap the agreement.
Yeah, I can. So myself and Laura were on the negotiation committee. It's a three-year contract. The bereavement leave that the teachers got in their contract, very similar language, almost identical language to that for bereavement was added. The, there was a sick day buyback that we added. This will allow us to get notified ahead of time if a This will allow us to get notified ahead of time if a secretary is retiring and we can plan for their replacement so we can train the replacement. We also added a step seven in the second year. Currently, they only have six steps. And then we added a step eight in the third year. The COLA percentages were 4% for year one, 4% for year two, and 4% for year three. Laura, did I miss anything?
I just, I did want to add when we did the comps for the secretaries. This increase puts us a little further in line with our comp towns and surrounding areas. Brings us up to a little more of where we should be.
Thank you. Were there any questions or comments from the committee members?
Is there a comment? I'm very grateful that you and Laura took this on. But I'm also grateful that the secretaries were, that they came to the table and everybody was focused on getting it done.
Yeah, I thought the negotiations went really well, good conversations. And the secretaries do an amazing job. Literally, we're just talking about at the beginning of the meeting, how they raised over $5,000 with their gift card fundraiser too for the community as well. And they are a vital part of the school. Any other questions or comments? Do we have the town manager, interim town manager?
Well, he's not joined via Zoom.
I, I have texted him.
As have I.
Okay. So he may have been, I don't know, with something else tonight.
He is fully aware of all the implications of the package, the numbers. Didn't, didn't express any concern to Dr. Gilson or myself prior to.
I would move to approve the MOU with the secretaries bargaining unit as proposed.
I would second that.
Any discussion? All right. We'll do a roll call vote.
Mrs. Przazowski?
Yes.
Mr. Beardmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Arshamo?
Yes.
Mr. Schoenbrini?
Yes.
Mr. Leighton?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Next item on the agenda is the winter athletics report.
You have the numbers that we weren't able to provide you at the last meeting because the last meeting occurred on the last day of tryouts. So you do have all of the numbers existing. If you have any questions or concerns, you can let me know and I'll connect with the AD and get back to you with additional information if needed.
What questions or concerns to the, or comments to the committee members have?
I would just say to the benefit of the public, if I'm reading this correctly, in 2022, we had 194 athletes. In 2023, 193. And 2024, 193. So, you know, we're tracking for pretty stable numbers here, which is great. And keeping in mind that we have, this is just slightly under 50% of our enrolled high school students are participating in, in winter sports is pretty good. And I think speaks to the strength and importance of this program, of our programs, of our athletic programs in the lives and development of our high school students. And seventh and eighth graders that participate as well.
I did have a question on the ski. So is that the ski team and that's not the ski club?
Correct.
Is that a co-op? Do you know?
I believe it is a co-op.
I saw four kids.
Is it Lemonster that we co-op with?
I believe so, yes.
Can I ask a question about participation rates in girls' hockey? Do we have, we don't have a team.
It's a co-op.
That's a co-op, yeah.
So these numbers represent Lunenburg students participating in these co-ops, which includes boys' hockey as well.
And then ice hockey as well. It's just the Lunenburg students?
I am going to go now, but I will be back later. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Laura. Merry Christmas.
Thanks, Laura.
All right. If there are no other questions or comments, I will look for a motion to accept the winter athletics report.
I will make a motion to accept the winter athletics report.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion on LMHS activity fees.
So if I could maybe ask for someone taller than myself to turn the volume on. And I will turn it over now to Dr. Gilson and Mr. Santry.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Gilson, I'm here to support you if you want to begin with the first few slides of the activity fee.
Dr. Gilson, I think you need to unmute.
Okay. Right. I'm off. I'm on, I'm, now I'm lying.
And I'll interrupt here. I want to thank her for being here for this meeting to go over these slides tonight. She's actually homesick today.
Sorry.
Can you see the slides?
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Okay. That's, that's good. The slides, we are going to review everything that we talked about for the athletic revolving account. And so our continuing challenge is basically the idea of the money that we're taking in is not equaling the expenses going out. And so we're exploring the activity and fee structure right now. We're looking at comparative from other surrounding towns. And we're also, it's also going to mean that we either have to afford more in the general fund or increase the fees or change the fee structure or do a combination of multiple things. So we're looking at the fee structure in, can I want to explain the fee structure at the middle high school?
Sure. So two different structures for the middle and the high school. The middle school student activity fee is a pay-to-pay. So it's $43 if you want to participate in after-school activities that are not athletics. For the high school student activity fund, it is a $55 fee for each and every student. And it's not paid per play, but every student pays. I think the difference is because in the high school, we get, provide services to each student through advisors in each grade level. But as Dr. Gilson says, I think we're facing the same problems that we are facing in any budget as the stipends and the increases to expenditures are outpacing the amount of money that we're taking in. Do you agree with that, Dr. Gilson?
I would absolutely agree and be trying to highlight this in the next slide. These are examples of some of the middle school activities that are running. They have advisors where we could track enrollment from last year. We actually put in the numbers. But basically, if you are using the money coming in to pay for stipends, you continue to see that the money coming in is not equaling the expenses going out. For example, the art club is taking in approximately $430. And the money that is expended for the stipend is $600. And that doesn't even include like supplies and materials and things that you might have in an art club. The, so ultimately, we have a situation where that stipends can be drawn from the activity revolving account. The stipends that are in blue are funded from the local budget, the general fund. But we're continuing to monitor and watch this expense very closely. If we look at the high school activities, Tim, why don't you explain what the high school activity fee actually is doing to provide all students with an experience?
Sure. Like I touched upon earlier, that is for our high school class advisors. When we're doing float work, those are the stipends that are paid out through that. So all students have the opportunity to participate in those. We also have clubs and activities. I think, Dr. Gilson, you'd be in agreement. One of the issues that we're running into is that we have now clubs that require busing. Our Science Olympiad clubs, which are actually competitions and which we have had great enrollment for in our, in academic, it's just a worth through our building, that those busing costs are outweighing what we can afford in the student activity fund. So that's why we really wanted to begin these discussions. Science Olympiad, I know prior to the pandemic, and actually, we worked through the pandemic and after that, those numbers continued to climb with students that want to participate in that. And I believe that we finished sixth in the state in 2021, I believe it was, which is quite an accomplishment. Unfortunately, and it's not unfortunate, you know, students have the opportunity to go to Harvard University and compete against other kids from across the state. But unlike athletics, where if we had, you know, a schedule of 10 games, five more at home, we don't have that opportunity with Science Olympiad. If we had five competitions, they're all away meets. So we all have to provide the busing for that. So those are some of the challenges that we're facing. And those are some of the expenditures that we have at the high school.
Paramount Fulling Athletics, one of our other challenges is that the number of low-income students that are needing waivers is increasing. Like you saw in the athletics presentation, this is also paralleled in the student activity account. And as students pay a $55 activity fee each year, there are approximately 450 students at the high school. And if everybody pays the activity fee, the cost is, the cost that is generated or the revenue that's generated is at $24,750. But this year, or this past year, we have approximately 90 students who needed fees waived. So our account is not gaining the full benefit of the user fees. And so that's, that's the challenge. And with their anticipated stipends, you know, the stipends that went out last year are $34,793 versus the revenue that's coming in, you know, really from user fees was like last year it was $19,800. So with the contract being new and with this new stipend increases, if all students pay, these are the projected increases to student activities in terms of the potential cost of the stipends over the next three years.
And another, I'm sorry, Dr. Gilson, you go ahead.
You have a, go ahead, Tim.
I was just saying, another variable on the high school activity count is that I wish all students that could pay the $55 fee each year paid as they, as we rolled into September. Sometimes that isn't the case. Sometimes that money isn't rolling in until, I don't know, they need a parking permit as a junior or as they're graduating, they're putting all of that money in. So it's very difficult to balance a budget when there are variables when we don't know how much money's coming in or when. Also, at the middle school, when I was a seventh grade special education teacher in 2003, the, the activity fee amount was $43. And 22 years later, the activity fee is $43. So although that fee has not gone up, other things have.
So that's right. That's, that's amazing that it still is the same rate at $43 when you started teaching. The benefits of the high school user fee, these are all the clubs that are offered that kids have a chance to benefit from. And many, the, many kids enjoy the freedom of being able to take advantage of those clubs. We looked at comparisons as we did with athletics. And there are some schools that, that offer an annual student activity fee, which is in line with the activity fee that we offer. There's some schools that do not offer an activity fee. And that means that all of these activities in the other schools are funded either with a local fund. So again, it's continued, our continued challenge is how do we continue to support the diversity of clubs and experiences with rising costs for transportation, the advisor stipends, materials, and memberships. So this is a, along with same theme as the athletic revolving account. And so we're examining each one of our accounts. So this wraps, this wraps up our student activity fee presentation. And Mr. Santry, if you'd like to add anything, please feel free to do so.
I, I just missed one of the things that's covered under student activities, which is one of our, one of our greatest traditions is the competitive class plays in the spring and also our spring presentation. So those are covered under that student activity fee.
Great.
Thank you. What, what questions or comments do the committee members have? Mr. Schoenbrini?
So two clubs make a profit. What are they doing differently that the other clubs are not? If you look at drama, drama makes what looks like a $30 profit, which is not great, but still it's a profit. And then the ski and snowboard, they make a pretty substantial profit. What are they doing differently?
Okay. Tim, if you can answer that, go, go ahead.
I'm, I'm not sure I do have an answer rather than the sheer numbers that are signing up for ski club is large and that is a revolving account. So is that number you show for the year, Dr. Gilson? Or is that money that's been in there for several years?
Uh, let's see. I think we're looking at money that is an annual fee that is being taken in or an annual, annual revenue and expenses going out. I will say that expenses going out for ski club, again, you have transportation costs involved. And also to the other thing that I did not know is that for draw and wipe, you have to pay for the cap rate fee for the script. So that's an added expense. But then again, you also, I do not know if the draw club charges a fee for the events that they, their productions. Mr. Santry, do you, are they charging a fee?
I think we charge $4 for students to see.
Okay. Okay. So those are like dialogues and gain receipts that we would take on with athletics.
When we...
I'm sorry. Yeah. Mr. Beardmore?
So I have a number of questions, but just some more fact-based questions at this point. When we're showing, for example, in the middle school, it's a pay-as-you-go program as opposed to an all-in. Obviously, there are some, there are some additional costs here that are going to students in the way of like ski club and the DC trip. We are, they, they're paying for whatever the cost is of the club, right? So the lift tickets at Mount Wachusett or whatever that is, right? As well as an activity fee to pay the advisor is that, and that's baked in together? And I'm assuming the same goes for the DC trip or?
No, I think they are paying for the club, for the supervision on the mountain. I think parents are picking up the lift tickets, that $43.
Oh, they're paying as they go?
Include that, yes.
Right. I, I understand it doesn't include it. I just didn't know if there was like a, an all-in cost on the front end or it's a pay-as-you-go or, or something like that.
I believe it's pay-as-you-go.
Okay, and obviously, we've seen the numbers associated with the Washington DC trip. It's substantially more than forty-three dollars. But is that forty-three dollars built into each, each of those hundred and thirty-two students that we're, that we're collecting?
Um, yes, I believe so.
Okay. Okay, um, so a couple of thoughts here. Take it, oh, oh, hey, I do have a, two more questions, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there, the, the split in approach from a all-in versus a pay-as-you-go, is there a, a logical history to that? Or do you know, does anybody know like why it's one thing in the middle school and another thing in the high school?
Well, I think when the middle school was split, that we didn't have as many activities as when we came together as a middle and a high school, so it didn't make sense to do a user fee. I'm not sure many middle schools do a full-out student activity fee.
Yeah.
And when I joined the high school in two thousand twenty-one, an activity fee had been the standard that we were doing. And I believe it is for those, those stipends for homecoming, for those, for these classifieds.
Okay, so the, the answer is more or less, which is okay, because we've always done it that way.
Yeah, yes.
Which is fine. The, the second question is, there would, there's been some narrative, some of which has been repeated on the single source of all truth, Lunenburg, which is Facebook, that there is some question in terms of the legality of applying an all-in activity fee, right? Like, can we legally require every student coming to a public school pay a minimum ante per year?
Can I provide a common sense answer? If you want to find a lawyer that will take your case for contesting a fifty-five-dollar fee, there are bigger problems in your life than the fifty-five-dollar fee.
Well, I, I mean.
There's a lot of stuff in the law that's not clear about that.
We do a lot of things that we would rather not do, but we do them because we have an obligation to follow the law as a school committee.
Sure.
So, so I'm asking this as a school committee member, not as somebody who would likely bring suit against the town for fifty-five dollars.
Okay. I, well, I mean, like, the reality is, you can get, go to court for anything for any reason. And the practical bar that I just mentioned prohibits or eliminates a vast majority of nonsensical lawsuits, right? If you had to, you know, if you could go to court and, and make it work for fifty-five dollars, our, our legal system would collapse. And so I don't know if there's ever gonna be a specific answer. I think there probably would be one that says yes, but without doing the research, I wouldn't want to say. I just think that like, Facebook is a terrible cesspool of garbage.
I'm just using this as a.
I, I understand, but like, they always go to crazy extremes. And the crazy extreme is, is this legal? And it's like, really, does it matter?
Well, I think it does, actually.
Why?
And, and the reason why it matters is because the reason that we are here is to provide a free public education.
Sure.
And if you're charging fifty-five dollars, it's not free. I mean, that, that, it's just a, it's just that basic principle, right? Like, we're not paying, I'm not paying tuition to send my kid to St. Bernard's, I'm sending him for free to Lunenburg. And, but I'm not sending him for free, I'm sending him for fifty-five dollars.
Our mandate is a free, appropriate public education. It is not drop club. There, that is not part of our, our mandate from the Supreme Court.
But you have to pay.
But we also have an equity requirement and a whole bunch of other things, right?
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Okay, so.
You have more of a statement.
Question not sufficiently answered, in my opinion, but, but you deserve it.
I would add that, I mean, we are audited by a state auditor, or, you know, every year, and they have not brought up what we're doing.
All right, well, that's, that's actually a very good answer.
Another thing that I might throw out there for consideration, and maybe we didn't ask the right question. It appears as though there are many districts that aren't charging a student activity fee, but they might be charging a class dues each year. I, I know that's what I had to pay when I was a student in high school.
We do, we do that.
We do that, we do that.
Correct. So I don't know if they're, if they're charging a class dues fee that is incorporating their facilitation of some of their student activities.
So a, a couple of thoughts now, in, in additions to my questions. First of all, I, I don't think all activities are created equal. Some have greater value, and from that value, sometimes there needs to come a greater cost. And I, you know, there, there is one outlier here that we're spending almost a hundred dollars per student on, in, in the middle school, whereas others were spending, you know, less than twenty percent of that. And I, I just wonder, like, is that the right way to come at that? You know, you're charging, you're charging a kid forty-three dollars, or a kid's family forty-three dollars for art club at relatively no cost, or very low cost. And Science Olympiad, we're busing kids back and forth to Harvard and, and all of the additional carrying costs that come with that. So I, I wonder about that. There are other things, like, you know, forty-three dollars to add a, to be able to afford the stipend for the advisor for the Washington DC trip, like, in my mind, like, that is the greatest value of all time. Like, you know, when you consider the amount of work and, and the supervision that they provide. So for whatever that's worth, I would encourage you to think about that. And, and I would not be opposed to applying some cost leveling to the middle school fees. Secondly, on principle, I, I don't think that some families should be paying the freight for other families through user fees, through fees. So, and, and I'm the guy that insisted that when we, when we put the, when we, when we changed the fees for athletics a few years ago, before I was even on the school committee, insisted that we add some, some means testing to this and, and connect it to, connected to free lunch calculus and that sort of thing. And then insisted that we enshrine it in policy. So I, I strongly believe that families that are meeting those qualifiers, we should not be charging for anything. That being said, because my kid participates, I don't know that I should be subsidizing that cost more than anybody else in the town of Lunenburg, Lunenburg, just because my kid is participating. So I think that as you're looking at the total cost, I think that we do have an obligation to absorb the costs associated with those ninety-odd students in the high school through the local budget. I don't know how else to put it, but I, I think, I think that that is fair. Lastly, I would add.
And applying the same principle to the athletic user fees, because.
Yes.
For, the, the same principle is happening there.
I, I concur. Now, I am not against raising any fees, given the situation that we're in, financially, the financial reality that we're in. But I think that the town and the school department's proportion, be, or portion, be proportional to whatever we're, we are waiving for, for fees that would otherwise be paid. And then, you know, my last comment is, and I've made this a hundred times, and I think you all know it, you can probably guess what I'm gonna say. Parents get, parents are reaching into their pockets all the time. And, and so we need to be very, I just got an email today, the track and field booster club is gonna be doing a snap raise, you know, coming up. And, and that's probably gonna cost me a couple hundred dollars, you know? Like, that's just the way it's gonna go, right? We are always reaching into our pockets. And so anytime that we are looking at increasing those fees, we are increasing the burden on families. And I think we need to be very mindful and careful about that.
Thank you, Ms. Ashenbow.
I, I think that I agree with Peter that not all activities are created equal, and that some probably should have a lesser amount charged, and some should have a greater amount charged, particularly in the area of stipends. You know, i- if your activity is once a week for twelve weeks, it's not the same as something that, like student government, it's like all the time. You know, so, so those should be weighed, and kids should be charged different amounts for that at the middle school. At the high school, I think I have said several times, I do not believe in kids paying this activity fee blanketly, knowing that some kids never use the activities. That doesn't seem right to me. They pay class dues, they don't go to anything, and they pay this activity fee, and the only thing that they do is graduate. That doesn't seem right to me, it has never sit with me. I mean, my kids paid their fees, one used it all the time, one never used it. So that's just my comment on it. But the, the end result is, we have to pay for this stuff. This is very important to, to our high school students and our middle school students. It's very important to their development. And I think, I think Peter's comment of, well, we do it that way, because that's how we've always done it. I don't know how to change it, but I think it, it's a good thing to look at. I, I wish I had ideas on, on how to make it better and how to make it more equitable. But yeah, those are my comments.
Mr. Skelton.
So one idea in looking at the money and understanding the explanation that was provided about how some make profits and some don't. If we had a tier where, you know, there was like, basically, break it down between those that require transportation and those that don't, or those that have extraordinary, predictable extraordinary costs, and those that don't. I think that, you know, making the fee tailored to, more tailored to what you do would both answer Carol's concern about not having people pay for other people, but also answer Peter's concern about legality. You know, if you want your, if you want to do Science Olympiad, and it's more expensive, because you get transported to Harvard every day, or every competition, then I think that you have to understand that that's gonna take more money. And I, you know, like, I think that the idea that, you know, we can't subsidize everyone is true, but there are some of these events that you can't have them run unless you have a certain number of people. I don't know, I, I've been, as we were talking, I'd never heard of Science Olympiad, so I was like, Wikipedia-ing it as we were talking to figure out how big the team has to be. It seems like forty is more than what's required, but you can't compete without a certain number of people. And some of these are, are probably pretty similar, like, unless we want to do one-man performances or one-person performances, drama club needs more than one person. And so like, I think we've just got to understand that like, at the end of the day, there's no way to do this without having some people subsidized. And whether that's subsidized by the school, or subsidized by the town, ultimately, it's still all taxpayer money, so we're just gonna subsidize people. And if that bothers people, then, you know, the alternative is, none of these things exist. The other option that I, I'm thinking of is, what if every, every club has to be self-sufficient? We charge fees to make the club self-sufficient. We charge fees to make the sports team self-sufficient. And if they can't do that, then we don't need them. I know that sounds terrible, but if we're really talking about, if people on Facebook are crazy enough to talk about suing the school district for fifty-five dollars, maybe we just say, fine, they're all self-sufficient, deal with that. And then that answers everybody's concerns about fairness. No one's subsidizing anybody that they're not participating in. Every team pays its own way, we are not taxing the taxpayers more, we are not asking for something out of the budget. I just think that like, one of the problems with all of these things is we've got to understand that like, at the end of the day, we're a community, and like, it might be that you have to pay a little more than what you think is fair for your kid to make the, the activity or the team work, because all of these are collective activities, right? You know, like, none of these are things that only one person does. And I think that we should either raise the fees across the board, go to a pay-as-you-go model based on, you know, a two-tiered system, or go as, go to a pay-as-you-go model that is designed to make the club self-sufficient. And then, you know, if parents don't want that, that's fine, but there's been, at least there's been a discussion. Because I think that continuing to do something the way we've always done it is a bad policy per se. It means that no one is actually making the decision. We're just defaulting and having the decision made by somebody in nineteen fifty-seven that set up the system. And I, I don't see why that's good, especially if the system is costing us money. I, I would prefer to do the middle of the three things that I outlined, which is, pay-as-you-go, but broken down by, you know, ones that require extraordinary costs and ones that don't. And that way, we kind of make it not self-sufficient, but at least it, it doesn't have the burn of, you know, paying for people that did nothing. Like, when I was in high school, I literally did nothing at my school. My school was forty-five minutes away on a great day. I had no desire to travel an extra two hours to do one thing, and I did stuff in my hometown. And so it was, it was silly for me to have these fees, but, you know, we paid them. And I think that, you know, Carol's point is a good one. Why are we paying for things if no one participates? But I also think, like I said before, collective endeavors are going to require some, 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 some form of subsidization.
I would agree with my colleagues. I think there, there is a, a lot of differences between a lot of the clubs, again, Science Olympiad and different busing clubs, where my first thought was fundraising, but I think that's, you never know what you're gonna get with fundraising from the clubs and the students. So fundraising would be ideal to, to try to have the, the clubs fundraise, but I think more likely, it's more likely a fee that fits with the particular club. And I feel like the enrollment, similar to sports, is probably pretty stable, where they're gonna see probably similar numbers, so we can get some decent numbers on that. But that's where I would like to see it go, is a, a fee. And I think the same thing at the high school level, I think it's, I would agree with Ms. Ashenbow that a fee for all doesn't make a lot of sense. I think it makes more sense for a fee with the activities that you're doing. If you're doing a ski club versus an award club, it would make sense to pay a new fee.
So could I just off with one additional thought on the, the blanket approach to the high school, which is? Tony made a point last night about floats. And, you know, I, I would, I would put drama in the same category, the competitive class plays. These are, these are things that are very important to the social development of a large segment of kids. They're very important to building class esprit de corps and, 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 and that ultimately translates to building long-term relationships, social, emotional health, and our kids not necessarily wanting to come to school, but not dreading coming to school, right? In some cases. And I, I, those things are paid for by that fifty-five dollars. And I think that it's gonna be really hard to get a kid to come to float meeting if they're a kid that comes to one or two or three float meetings in a homecoming season, if they gotta come up with fifty-five dollars, or, or some, some, you know, percentage thereof, probably fifty-five dollars, because when you start doing the, the math of all of this and a lower participation rate, it's gonna increase the cost. So there is absolutely a benefit to spreading the cost here, right? And, and just, I, I get that. I just, it, it's, it's hard to address the problem of that kid that is not going to participate, and why are they subsidizing the cost of, of everybody else? It's, it's not a, it's not a slam dunk in either direction, so I just want to.
Just a clarifying question, if I may, maybe Dr. Gilson could help me, or members of the committee. The two-tiered approach that you've discussed with busing or no busing, additional funds. The two-tiered approach that you've discussed with busing or no busing, additional funds for the busing. Is that work that begins with my school advisory council in my handbook, or is that work that starts with you? Is that something that I present to you that you will approve? Just in order, we have begun those discussions, at least at the middle school, in the Science Olympiad.
I think, feel free to jump in, other committee members, but I think we're looking for a proposal from, from you, from your advisory that would get us more financially stable with fees and revenue.
I do not think that this should be changed without the consent of the school committee. So, and I understand we, we, we ultimately approve the handbooks, but we don't take as active a role in the handbooks as the advisory committees and yours, you and your staffs. I think this is something that ultimately needs to be approved by the school committee.
I think, I, I think those two proposals, what was just said are mutually compatible. So I think it's helpful to know what parents want. And then,
Yeah, oh yeah.
You know, like, if everybody's angry, then we screwed this up. I mean, it doesn't seem like everybody's angry right now. It just seems like we're losing money. So like, eventually they'll be angry. It's, you know, future school committee's problem. But like, having a proactive approach, I think, begins with soliciting opinions from parents and kids and faculty advisors. And then coming to us and say, like, here's what, here's a consensus, even if there's not like a consensus solution. Like, here are the groups, here's the ideas that they have. Because I just don't know enough. I mean, I, I'll be honest, I have no idea how much any of these fees are. My wife runs the show, so like, I just, I do what she tells me.
Yeah, I think just looking at the numbers, the alarming thing for me is, at the high school level, the fifty-five dollar activity fee bringing in a revenue of about twenty thousand dollars, and the anticipated stipend expenses are getting close to forty thousand dollars. That means we could potentially double that activity fee to a hundred and ten dollars to cover the expenses. That, I think, would be alarming to parents.
Agree.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping that you have some good feedback from us to take to the advisory.
Yes. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda is a discussion on legislative delegation. So I do not have any, I don't have much for updates here. I did talk, I did reach out to the select board chair that he is planning to have a, a legislative public meeting um after the New Year. Uh but I don't know, he, he doesn't have a date set yet. Um that's all I have at this point. Any other discussion on legislative delegation? Alright, moving on. The next item on the agenda is school committee resolutions. So this is somewhat connected to the legislative delegation that we are able to make resolutions, um could be connected to the legislation and the legislators. Um so I did put uh in the folder some potential resolutions. So from the MASC, they publish resolutions um that some committees, school committees will either adopt or they could revise. Uh this committee, the Lunenburg School Committee, has had resolutions in the past and has also revised uh MASC resolutions. So before I drafted a bunch of resolutions, I did, I wanted to have a, a sense of what the committee was looking for. Also, in regards to the MASC ones, there are other ones too, like the current social security issue with, at the national level. Committees could make a resolution of that as well. So these are some examples. Uh obviously, the MCAS, High Stakes MCAS test, testing resolution is already somewhat past its uh date. But a lot of the other ones could potentially be useful. We could use, use them, revise them. I am open to suggestions. I think some of them are connected to.
I mean, looking through the list, when I looked through the list earlier today, Resolution seven and Resolution eight seem like things that we have talked about ad nauseam. And so I think putting those things uh in front of the uh legislative uh delegation as resolutions. I don't know if it, it helps, but it certainly can't hurt us. I mean, it just seems to me that we've gotta do so. I mean, again, the cost of busing came up. And, you know, chapter seventy, we've talked about that a hundred thousand times. Peter brought it up tonight. We, we know these are problems.
Yeah, I think it, it's good to, again, keep that communication open and showing them that we're still paying attention to this and this is what we care about. Other discussion?
No, I would agree with that. Um the other thing, and I don't know how this fits. But the other thing is that we have talked about forever is unfunded mandates. If there be some kind of, I know there's something further down here about full funding on transportation costs for students and foster care and state care. That costs a tremendous amount of money, and it is an unfunded mandate. So things like that, I think, might also, I, I agree with the other two though that Tony had said. Because that's important, but also the unfunded mandate issue, I think, is important.
I agree. Um I, I think what is probably more important than a resolution with a lot of whereas is we need to put a number and an effect on these things. You know.
Make it more of a personal Lunenburg touch to it.
This is the cost of Lunenburg, right? Dragging your feet on chapter seventy has effectively cost us this much money because the town is supplementing what the state isn't doing. And there's probably, probably pretty simple math that we can do to come up with that number. Over a five-year period, over a three-year period, one-year period, whatever. Unfunded mandate, same thing. Um and, and I think Selecting Jeffries kinda brought that up a little bit last night in his commentary. Um I, I think we have got to, going into this year's budget season in particular, begin to kinda put a number on these things, right? So if you're looking at, for example, um he brought up the DESI requirements on the um the uh IEP uh process and, and forms and meetings and all that kinda thing. If we know that this is requiring X amount of hours in meeting time and document preparation time and all of that kinda thing. We need to put a number on these things and say, hey, look, this is what regulation has cost us over a period of last year to this year, or you, you know, ideally over a number of years. And, and you, you could, you know, theoretically, you could do the same thing for busing, right? What does a busing mile per kid cost in Lunenburg versus a busing mile per kid cost in Townsend? Because they get state, uh regionalization money and we don't. Uh I, I think that those are the things that really need to personalize this for Lunenburg.
Thanks. I think that, that uh some useful discussion, and I can draft up some resolutions that are more Lunenburg-specific. Take the MASC language and adjust. Any other discussion? Alright, moving on to reports, and just go down the line if you have any reports.
Uh when I was thinking about reports before I came in tonight, I was thinking that uh I need to up my bargaining rate for school committee duty uh by a significant percentage, because I've put in a lot of meetings the last couple of weeks. So the um, uh, the town manager uh screening committee met twice last week for a total of, I believe, about eight or eight and a half hours over two nights. And we interviewed six candidates and uh push, put forward, or are in the process of putting forward uh three finalists to the select board, uh and they will be interviewed in early to mid-January, I believe is the, the timing for that.
Close, public or private?
Um I don't know if, I was in and out of the select board meeting last night. I don't believe they were made public yet.
They were not.
So um they will be. Um the, the process is such that the screening interviews are done in executive session. Uh the screening committee comes up with a list of finalists. Uh those finalists need to accept and agree to being brought into a public finalist interview round. Uh and then those need to be scheduled. And so that is the process that we are in right now. Um and I believe that the, the names and the times of those interviews will be announced in, in early January. So that was uh really great, and I'm, I'm uh very optimistic uh with the uh the candidates. The, the overall quality of candidates, I thought, was excellent. And uh, and I'm, I'm really optimistic about the three candidates that are finalists, so. And we did not have as many applicants as we had hoped and anticipated. It was a little bit smaller pool of applicants. But in fact, the quality of those applicants was quite good. So we're really pleased. And I think that spending fifteen thousand dollars in ARPA money to bring in a consulting firm, those guys have more than earned their money and they've done a really good job for us, so very, very appreciative. Last night, the uh capital planning committee met and approved our recommendation to the town manager for the capital prioritization list for FY twenty-six. Uh there were um, there were, uh excuse me, twenty-five items on that list. Um and I'll just give you some highlights in terms of where school-related uh items are. Uh number two was the primary school feasibility study for entry and driveway expansion. Number six was the primary school design services for playground equipment. Number seven was the Turkey Hill Elementary School hot water tank. Number fourteen was the primary school generator. Number fifteen was the replacement of security cameras and central server. Uh and number nineteen was the primary school window safety film. So pretty good spread. Nineteen was the lowest school rating uh out of twenty-five. The, the net effect this year, uh so a couple of things have happened from a funding perspective since we last met. Um I mentioned that at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, Carter had come in and estimated that the funding level would be around one point one million. An error was discovered in the free cash calculus, and our certified free cash came out considerably higher than what was anticipated. And as a result of that, uh Carter has estimated that there's probably at least another quarter of a million dollars that will go to capital. And um, and so that'll bring us probably to a floor of about one point three five million. And uh so that could, depending upon how the town manager's recommendations roll, uh could see us getting funding for nearly everything uh on our list. The way it worked this year was that the lower-cost items rose to the top and the higher-cost items kinda fell to the bottom. With a couple of exceptions, the town hall windows were expensive, and there was a six-wheel dump truck for the DPW. Carter just put out an email to the committee uh this evening and um has, you know, his initial thinking right now may give us the opportunity where, when you take the ARPA items that have already been funded and what remained on our request, you know, I, I would say the safety film is probably on the bubble at this point. But we, we, we're, we're in the running for potentially running the table on capital this year. Now, all of that being said, ARPA was a huge contributor, right? Directly paid for two items, the window film here and a dump truck plow. But also is paying for DPW infrastructure projects that would have otherwise been on this year's capital plan request that did not show up to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so you've got that, you actually have a rising tide effect on this year's capital plan where uh we were able to, you know, I think we'll ultimately, we will do a lot better than I had anticipated, even, even a month or two ago. So, um all told, I'm, I'm really pleased with the outcome. Uh the capital planning committee will be meeting uh in January again. Uh and we have a, a punch list of things that we wanna discuss, which are more long-term. Landing on recommendations for department heads for a five-year capital plan, a report to town meeting, some policy uh recommendations and a, a few other things. So we'll try to have at least three or four meetings prior to town meeting uh for that. Uh and then lastly, the um high school advisory committee met last Thursday. I was traveling last week uh and was not able to attend that particular meeting. But they did discuss a number of items, including the cell phone uh policy for which they recommended that um, that no formal policy uh be adopted and that it be uh remitted to a handbook discussion. I've had some email communication with um Mr. Santry and uh Ms. Tuzi Knott. I, I don't agree with that outcome, and uh I, I intend to continue to, to raise that issue with them.
In regard, great news about the capital plan. I, I did have a question about the capital planning, though, for the primary school generator. Did they get the updated number on that?
Uh no, I was, I, what, I did not, but we were working against one seventy-one, right?
We had an updated quote that came a good bit north of one seventy-one.
Oh. That was my worry, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. I think I might have missed that.
It is part of one of our, um I don't know if it was the last month's um facility report. We give a, we give a facility report update uh at the first meeting each month.
Okay, I may have, I may have spaced that. That may be my fault. I was thinking of the overrun, the overrun that we had to contend with as the uh fire suppression, not the generator. So that may require some additional conversation.
Yeah, I think the, the, the difference there is that the, the overrun with the um, the fire alarm system is that that capital money is already been allocated and is not gonna be sufficient. Whereas the generator is a future project that hadn't been approved.
Alright, I will advise the committee and Carter on that. I, I think ultimately, this is gonna have to come down to the, to the uh the good judgment of the town manager when it comes to capital planning. I, I don't anticipate that that is something that will be absorbed, and I apologize, I, I missed that.
No, it's okay. I was watching the YouTube and I had, saw the number and I just remembered it was, that seemed off. Karen?
Okay. Um the middle school advisory council met on the tenth. And they decided that they thought that for the school calendar, we should, next year, we should go to school on the twenty-second. A full day, the twenty-third a half day. So that we don't have the two full weeks off at Christmas time, the winter vacation. They decided that. The cell phone use policy was very similar, conversation was very similar to what you, you are saying. Um they said that the high school has a limited cell phone policy, just don't use it in class. But the teachers control whether the cell phone is used in the classroom for education. The middle school has a zero pol- uh tolerance policy. The cell phone is supposed to be off and in your backpack. It was felt by the group that that decision should be made at the school level and not a policy here. That's what the discussion was. Uh the DC update, so far, they have about forty students signed up. The fifteenth of January is the deadline. That is typical for this far out. People usually wait till after the holiday to sign up. They are able to give some scholarships for about fifty percent of the cost. He had um been contacted by, I think, nine families requesting need for scholarship help. The PTO said they would help with some um monies as well. He also has contacted He also has contacted kids who haven't, families that haven't gone in the past couple of years to figure out if it was a money thing, or the child had already been there, or the child doesn't wanna go away from home or whatever. And he found about fifty percent of the kids that didn't go was a money. So, he wants to pursue, um, ways to make sure that that is more equitable. And he also talked about guidance staffing. Their guidance counselor was on leave, and she is back now. And the social worker was on leave and she resigned, and so they're hiring for that position. So, that is the information from the middle school. Um, Finn Connaughton's meeting tomorrow night.
Uh, the Budget Task Force concluded its work on Monday. Dr. Burnham, Dr. Gilson, and Renee is on select board, so she was there. Uh, Ezekiel and I, uh, were attended yesterday's meeting of the select board where we presented the findings. There was an executive summary that was written. It was a team effort, a lot of the stuff that came in was from Ezekiel. A lot of the stuff that came in was from Dr. Burnham's meticulous note-taking. And then, there was a lot of feedback from Renee. Um, we had about an hour and a half discussion at select board, I mean, I got home at like nine-thirty. So, it was a wide-ranging discussion, uh, we talked about all kinds of stuff. We did veer into the topic of why schools increasingly expensive, and I did my very best to provide us a defense. I don't know if it worked, uh, and I really hope, and I contacted Dr. Burnham today to make sure, did I like screw anything up, did I say anything, was like totally crazy? I had not anticipated that question, it was not related to the Budget Task Force, but I'm always happy to talk to people about why schools are expensive and how important they are in the community. I think the feedback from the Budget Task Force findings was like, none of this is surprising, thank you for getting here. I do think that one of the things that everybody was most interested in was the CPA. I think that CPA is the very best way for us to avoid a catastrophe as a town. And I also think that CPA is something that we could pass. I, I'm concerned about an override.
What is the CPA?
Oh, sorry, the Community Preservation Act, it's a, it's a program, it's a matching fund program where the state uses revenue generated by the Registry of Deeds to match funds expended by towns, so long as the towns expend at least ten percent in three different areas, which are preservation of historic buildings, parks, and, uh, preser- uh, updating and maintenance of parks, and then affordable housing. There are two hundred towns in the state that do CPA. Uh, of the twenty-five towns that initially did it when the act was first passed, all twenty-five still do it. We have a ton of money that we are going to spend as a community, both in the school and in the town in general, that will be eligible for reimbursement from the CPA. And so, I basically told the select board and anybody that watched that CPA is like, do you wanna do this home improvement before and get the, the rebate? Or after and not get the rebate? Cause we have to do these improvements anyway. So, uh, hopefully, there will be some, uh, will among the body politic to look at the CPA more closely. A lot of the other recommendations were things that are, started, you know, already in the works. Um, the one thing that we did recommend, that I think everybody agreed with, was we need to have some kind of, uh, diagnostic audit for the town. There's just too many crazy finance and accounting practices and too many things that are unaccounted for for us to not do something like that, especially if sometime in the near future, we're gonna go to the taxpayers and ask for an override for the town. I did point out, and I think this is true, that the appetite for an override or the ability to pass something like that, or like the CPA, has changed. And I think that the, the core group of people, uh, that organized, passed the override for the school, prove that there is a will for real change in the town, that may not have existed five years ago or ten years ago. And it doesn't mean that those people have to do the CPA thing again, I think that would be unfair. But, it is to say that, like, everybody said it was impossible, and Shashana, Sybil, TJ, Mandy, and all the other people involved, they did it. Even people on that stage that I was talking to said it was impossible, and they did it. So, I think that we need to recognize that we exist in a different space than we did five or ten years ago, so... I'm glad it's done, it was a lot of work. Everybody was really great, it was interesting to meet different people from all different parts of the town. And I think that the split tax rate is a crying shame, because big companies take up big resources and they get taxed at the same rate as everybody else. But, I will not do that rant again for like the fifty-millionth time.
Thank you, man. Thank you for your work on the committee and chairing the committee. I know the, uh, the PTO will be glad that it's, uh, it's over.
I'm, I am so looking forward to going back to the PTA, it's so much less depressing.
Oh, and I did see in the news that NADIC is actually looking for about approximately an eight million dollar override.
I saw that too.
Potentially. Uh, the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design met on Monday. We had the architect come with their initial proposal, draft, their first draft, very rough draft. They were actually combining the schools and school offices in the Ritter Building with other offices, and we had talked about how it's probably gonna, the school's probably gonna have to take up the whole building. They wanna do an addition, or the, uh, the Ritter expansion on the, on the side, um, kinda towards the, the old primary school, and it would be like a, a walkway. Currently, they had a two-floor walkway to connect, probably like a thirty, forty-foot walkway that would go across to both floors of the Ritter. Um, and that's where all the other town offices would be. But it was a very rough draft, not aesthetically pleasing, nobody liked the design, but the architects appreciated the feedback, and they're gonna come back in January with, uh, taking all that feedback that we gave them and, uh, come up with another draft. And, uh, we're gonna try to get more public feedback, uh, after, after that draft. Or if people wanna come to the meetings too, they can check out the, the presentations from the, the architects. That's all I had. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment from the public?
There's no publics.
Seeing none, any public comments from the committee? Ms. Arshinov?
I just wanna thank Mr. Schoolenbrini for his fine job of, of shepherding the Budget Task Force. When, um, I saw the small window of time, I thought, Tony will get it done in that small window of time. So, um, you were the proper person for the job, and I thank you very much, as well as Dr. Burnham and, and Dr. Gilson for all that time. It's a lot of time, but I, it was very important work, and I thank you very much.
I just wanted to add that I thought the tree lighting, uh, went really well, a great community effort, and it was great to see so many people there too. Anything else? Alright, topics for future discussion. Anything you'd like to add for a future agenda? You can always reach out to myself and Dr. Burnham. If not, I'll look for a motion to adjourn at eight-twenty-two PM?
Yes. Pisspaw?
Say it, do it.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight-twenty-two PM.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. We are adjourned, thank you.
Awesome.